And without further ado, welcome to our board meeting. Today is September thirteenth. Please stand and join us in the pledge. Our pledge reaches to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The mission? The mission of the White Plains? Thank you.
Sorry.
Before we go into our mission, to you, Dr. Vada.
Yeah, just before Saturday was the twentieth anniversary of the nine eleven attacks. And I'd like to ask for you to join us in a moment of silent reflection in memory of those who were lost on the eleventh and all of the families who were impacted. And of course, those who continue to suffer with the effects of exposure at Ground Zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go into our mission statement. The mission of our school district is to educate and inspire all students while nurturing their dreams so they learn continually, think critically, pursue their aspirations, and contribute to a diverse and dynamic world. Next, we'll move into any announcements. I'll start with a few of us were able to attend the first football game of the season. And it was a very nice Friday night for our team. They won against Austin in just a good way to start off our football team's season. Any other announcements?
I just, on the opening day of school, I dropped in on a number of schools, just ran in. I was at Eastview, I was at Highlands, I was at Ridgway, I was at MAS, I'll get to the others. And it was just so great to hear kids and see kids and see everybody energized. Thank you, everybody. It was just, it was great.
Yeah, I'll just jump on that because we sent five people back to schools in our house. We had three of the kids go back, and my wife and I teach as well. So everybody went back on the first day at the same time. So it was insanity in the house. But I'm happy to report, everybody had a wonderful first day. And a few days, even with the masks and social distancing, the kids were just excited to be back in the classroom with their friends, out of recess. And some of them came home with some masks. This one I stole from my daughter in eighth grade. So they got some masks they brought home as well. But three different bus, three different schools means three different buses. So we did have some hiccups with our bus. But it's to be expected on the first day or two. So we're hoping that Sergio gets it ironed out. I know he was responsive when we called and my neighbors called when we had a little bit of an issue. But I have to say, as a teacher myself, these memorizing faces and names with masks on is truly impossible. How are your teachers, are they doing it? Are they memorizing your names or no? Yeah, and so usually within the first few days, but it's been a challenge, no doubt. So I hope, I need just a week, I think, now to do that. But yeah, I was at the football game. I missed you guys, but it was a beautiful evening and a great game.
Can I just make a comment to your point, Kane? I was going to talk about this during my report, but since you raised it. Transportation, we have been having some issues. You know, obviously, we're transporting thousands of kids a day. But definitely, I've heard from parents and guardians. And we are working with the transportation company to get all of those ironed out. Route changes, route adjustments, also making sure that the appropriate number of students are on buses. And all of that's in play right now. And we really, it really is the conclusion of day three today. But that notwithstanding, you know, I spoke with many parents and let them know that we're 100% in agreement. And we expect that we should be able to have these services without any hiccups for them ASAP.
That's great. And we don't have a shortage of bus drivers as so many of the school districts do, or?
Yeah, I almost hesitated. So we are, we are really fortunate. You probably saw on the news, some school districts closing or have difficulty because of the extreme driver shortage. Now, I do have to point to, and you didn't know this when you were saying it, but really, a lot of credit does go to the board. You'll recall that at the outset of the pandemic, we continued to engage our transportation company and utilize them in different ways, even though they weren't running kids every day. What that allowed that company to do was not to furlough their drivers. So, you know, one of the biggest challenges that companies are having now is trying to recapture those employees who they lost during that period of time. And, you know, fortunately, we're not experiencing that to the extent, thank you, for that support.
I have a few announcements I'll mention. Most of us were at the summer school, high school graduations, which was really, you know, it's a high point during the summer. And I think it's unusual that our school district has a ceremony to honor and recognize those students who have finished up their high school careers here during summer school. So that was, that was a real, a real treat.
And Cheryl, before you go on, I have to just really emphasize that we all think that that is so important to attend and to let our students know that their road may have been a little different, but they got to where they needed to be. And it's really a life lesson, you know, to state of course, to persevere and have grit so that you reach these milestones. So I think it's a valuable life lesson.
Absolutely. I'll also mention the reopening committee continues to meet. Reopening is sort of a continuous process here, which it needs to be. And so we do want everyone to know that we are constantly, you know, looking at what we're doing and examining and changing as necessary. So we are being very thoughtful in the work that we do to keep everyone as safe as possible, to provide the educational opportunities we need to, social, emotional support, all those things. So we're totally engaged in reopening.
Next one on Wednesday, right?
Yeah, yeah. I'll also mention that I think almost all the schools had welcome back, virtual welcome backs for their parent communities. I attended the Highlands Welcome Back 2021. Lots of parents were there, lots of questions, presentations by the administration really to address, you know, all the anxiety and the stress and the worry at the beginning of the school year. So it was well done, and we really appreciate that this was being done with all the parent communities here in the district. And then finally, White Plains Library did a back-to-school presentation. They had a panel, and Joe was, was on that along with a physician and psychologist talking about the challenges. I think most of it ended up being about school.
Right on my lap.
Right, right. But well done. I don't know how many attended. It was not, not a Zoom where you could, where you could see but the other people, but it was certainly well done and very informative. So thank you.
Thank you. Just a couple of things, and most of them already been touched on, certainly this weekend and the twentieth anniversary. Certainly very somber, and I think everybody in the community properly respected this past weekend. And it's just, it's a, it's a good opportunity for us to just take that time to reflect. So that was a special opportunity to be able to do that.
I think also there was so much talk, we talked so much about September eleventh, but there was also a tremendous amount of talk about September twelfth and how that important that was and how we became unified as a country and as a world in many ways, without that thought of politics or gender or anything. It was just all united as one. It was incredible.
And again, I think it's, you feel so much like your parents when you, when we talk about something 20 years ago, when we say, boy, I just feel like it just happened. But it, but it really does. And I know that memory sears in our mind. And I know we share those stories with our younger ones who are either too young to remember or not with us because they just weren't, weren't born at that time. And it's, it's just a very powerful day still, 20 years later. And I know it rings true with many of us. On certainly, nice lighter notes, we had traffic, which is fantastic.
Yes.
School traffic out there. We gotta get to school on time, and you know, getting to the high school every day, drop my daughter off. And we're trying to figure out what's the latest we can make it without, without getting caught in traffic. So it's, it's great to be able to try to figure out the traffic patterns again.
It's amazing how it changes from the first day to the second day on North Street. The first day, everyone's like, alright, let's get there, let's get there. And then the second day, like, we're not going to make that mistake again.
Yep, we gotta go a different time. We're triangulating, we're figuring it out. And I don't want to give my-
The novelty will wear off, I'm sure.
Sure. I don't want to give up my secrets yet because I know what our time is, but I want to share it because then I may clog it up. And like Kane said, it was great, everybody. The house a little bit smaller because we got some in school, but certainly, three of the four of us went back to school. And the dog is certainly lonely because she wonders where everybody is right now. Sports have started, it's great, body and mind. I think it's great for our students to be able to participate in these great sports, taking care of themselves mentally and physically. And I think that's really terrific. And this past weekend was a great example of that. And we get the schedule every week from Michelle and the athletic department. Thank you. And that, that tells us of all the great activities that all of our students are participating in, which is really great. And that was terrific. Rosemary, thank you for mentioning. And Cheryl, thank you for talking about the high school graduation this summer. I wrote down persistence and grit, and then you said persistence and grit.
Great minds.
But really, thank you. But really, let's think about it. Our students who graduated, they could have just as easily packed it up and walked away. And I think it's really wonderful that they didn't do that. And, and we, as a board and the community, we owe it to them to celebrate their achievement just the same way we celebrate all of our other students' great achievement with graduating. So it was certainly an honor to be there. And I really think they do a great job. We've got a photographer there. We take pic, the graduates have pictures taken. It's really a celebration. They bring their families.
Cupcakes.
Cupcakes. Even more. Individually rounded. But, but it's really wonderful. And this isn't the first time we've done this. But I think, you know, we certainly want to be there for all of the experiences and celebrations of our students. And this is just as important. And we really, we really work, I know we all really work hard to make it. I think maybe one or two years more, just I haven't been in town to make it. But you always feel like we owe it to our students. And it's really wonderful to do that. And yeah, we're, and hopefully, everyone made out all right with the terrible storm last week. We know everyone didn't. And it was very difficult. I know the schools did pretty well. Sometimes they're, you think they're sinking sometimes because they're taking on so much water. But overall, I know we did okay. And certainly, to all members of the community, we hope they get back in, in order, in due time because it's, it's just disruptive and it just upsets the whole household. So, you know, tough times. And we gotta, I know everybody's recognizing that too, and the community is working to help folks. So that's all I've got. Thank you.
And there are communities that could not open on time because of damage. So we here in White Plains have been fortunate, you know.
And we assisted. We're assisting a neighboring school district. Well, that needed help with some supplies. And we were able to do that.
Great.
Anything, anything else? Thank you, everyone. Thank you. Next, we're going to move into public participation. The public is invited to address the board and superintendent on any matter relating to the White Plains Public Schools. Please limit your statements to three minutes. Please also respect the privacy and dignity of all individuals, whether students, faculty, administration, or others. The administration will be happy to address privately any school-related matters of a more personal nature. Do we have any public participation tonight? Okay, yes, please, dipole him and please say your name and address, please.
Hello, and welcome back. My name is Pauline Rodriguez. I live in a cool community around the avenue near White Plains. Seen a lot since I've been in the building, so it's been nice to see all of you. I wanted to say a couple things versus happy to see that things are back in school. My son is in Highlands, and we are very happy to that. I'm very happy that sports are back in session. They're super happy about all of that, getting their energy out after a full day of school. And I was also very happy to see that White Plains has approved the new code of conduct this year, which I know introduces some more restorative practices. So my question for, for tonight is, when and how will that, will the teachers be trained on those new restorative practices? And how will they implement it in the schools?
I don't think I could have asked for a better question this evening because during superintendent's report, we're actually going to be giving an update on social, emotional learning and restorative practices and how that is, the intersection of those and how that's going to roll out in our school. Ms. Alderman is going to be giving that update.
Great. That's coming up next, it looks like.
You can read minds here. Look at them.
Hi, I'm Laura Kieran. I live at Six Susan Court, and I have three children in the district. And so I'm very excited and grateful to the White Plains School District for the opening of school and my children who had a really nice transition to school. So I think, I thank all of you for making that possible. And I also understand that last year was such a challenging year for all of you, all the teachers, parents, students. It was, you know, really one for the records, that's for sure. And, and I understand also that, you know, the code of conduct that Pauline brought up wasn't necessarily kind of just in the ways that it would have traditionally if our students were, you know, in any other year, all in, in person, you know, in an assembly or whatever that may be. So I'm wondering this year, when and how will the students be addressed with, you know, their rights and their responsibilities on the campuses? Specifically, I have two children at the Highlands Middle School, so that's, you know, what I'm most curious about. But in general, just in addition to administrators and as well as staff members, how will children be, you know, brought up to speed and really helped to understand their expectations?
Yeah, so that'll all be presented.
Yeah, yeah, no, that's all part of it. But I can also, so I don't know the exact day for Highlands, but certainly, I would think, you know, Mr. Eaton or Mr. Spatifor would be able to let you know exactly when. But yes, we do, the teams do go through the code of conduct and expectations with all of our children and make sure that, you know, if there are any questions or anything related to that, that the children have the opportunity to ask. Also, during the team-building opportunities that take place usually during the first two weeks of school, which will be happening this year, which is fantastic, those core principles are reviewed with, with the kids. We do send home, as you all know, the code of conduct appears in both the school calendar and also, in many instances, in the typical school flyers that go home. There's a pamphlet, I know Ms. Alderman, you just got that out there a few weeks ago. And the hope is that all of the children, not the hope, but the desire, the goal, is that all the children understand and recognize what the expectations for interactions, behavior, all of those types of scenarios are so that there aren't any questions, you know. That's, that's what we try to do.
Great. Just one more thing. Can I jump back up? Because I didn't take-
You did, you did not take your full three minutes.
I just wanted to say, I know last year there was a sort of homeroom period or advisory period beginning of the day, in particular at Highlands. And I was so happy to see that that is still in place this year. It really gave my son a very nice opportunity to get to know one teacher and for one teacher to get to know him. And I think that went for a lot because of the school last year. It really gave them sort of a touch point because they don't all go to see their counselors all the time. Or as a teacher, but just to have someone in that homeroom every day, I thought that was something, so I was really happy to see that's-
Good.
Joe, they're calling that attendance this year, not advisory. It was like a name change, right?
You're gonna-
Are you gonna?
Debbie will talk a little bit about it.
Just the homeroom. I mean, I went to Cal, so I was in the Cal homeroom.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. So next, we'll have our superintendent's report.
Yes, thank you very much. And before I move into superintendent's report, I do want to take a moment to introduce our representatives from White Plains High School this evening who are here. Gentlemen, thank you so much for being here with us. Welcome. And Chugga and Jack, you guys want to go up and just give us a kind of a quick snapshot about how things have been going so far for you and what the experience is about?
Just 10 or 20 minutes. So regarding like the first three days at school, it's been pretty welcoming considering last year was very, we had the whole school staggered and most people couldn't form proper relationships with their teachers because of the whole sort of distancing. But now that, I feel like it's become very flexible at the school. So I've been able to, you know, connect with my teachers. I've been able to talk with my peers. The warm situation is, well, I never had anyone go to school for lunch last year, but, you know, I like how we're able to eat outside. And, you know, I mean, I've only been one for three days.
I know.
Being welcomed back like that is pretty, I like it a lot.
Good.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. During the past three days, I've been surprised at how we've welcomed back. Welcome back, and all the teachers welcome us. However, I would like to point out that the hallways have been a little bit crowded.
Yeah.
So I'm worried about my elephant up from like three years ago. I would suggest the staggered building system that we had last year, which, you know, balance it out because you might know, but we, you know, we go into a building, this is nothing like, I don't know, four, three, four, six, seven, eight. You can't remember. I was like two minutes, like, you know, so private.
Was that Friday? Was that Friday, do you remember? Thursday, or sorry, Friday?
Yeah, Thursday.
Thursday was three days.
Okay.
But everything else has been great. All the teachers have been so, so nice to eat. For, not only the three days, but the rest of the holidays. I'd love to say that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
And I'm just going to take a couple of minutes before I hand it over to Ms. Alderman. But I agree, and thank you, gentlemen. One of the things, as you mentioned, Dr. Vada, was that we are looking at everything in terms of how all of our planning has been operationalized now. And for instance, at the high school with 2,100 children. So we knew after day one and two, I think, at the high school that we needed to really address lunch. And Principal Martinez and his team went back to the drawing board or trying, trying a new way and good, good pointing out also in terms of the hallways and looking at staggering. So basically, we're, you know, we're going to address those, those very issues as they come up. One of the other issues, as I mentioned earlier, was the after-school bus at the high school being overcrowded. And, you know, I know we're working right now in terms of, in splitting those routes to thin out the students who are riding. So it's great to point out any of those areas. Yeah, go ahead.
I have a question.
Sure.
So I've, I've just been informed that, you know, two of them are flexible. And I wanted to know the cost for that. How it's going to, you know, split the whole?
Yep, yep. And absolutely, you know, feel free to talk to Mr. Martinez. But the reason we went from the two to the one was because with the one, we can use far more common spaces to, for lunch. Where when we have the two, we have other things taking place in those common spaces. So you're not able to utilize like, you know, the study hall room or some of the other larger areas. Also utilizing the tents outside and court guards and really trying to give all of the students as much flexibility and opportunity to go where they want to go. Even if you wanted to like kind of just go with a buddy into, into a hallway, utilizing kiosks, we're looking at getting additional furniture, high tops and the like for students to be able to use. So you think more like a cafe feel. And all that stuff will be coming. But the reason moving from the two to the one was to have more space available. It's kind of counterintuitive. You would think like, oh, it's going to be everybody at one time. But the reality is, it actually makes it more flexible.
The one thing I'd like to say in terms of making it safest for all of our students, and certainly at the high school where everybody is of age, is to encourage everyone who has, who is able to, to get vaccinated because the most important thing we can do is have herd immunity. And the more who are vaccinated, the more likely that happens. And of course, to also wear masks. That's my other life as a doctor in the community. So I'll make my pitch for as many people to get vaccinated and wearing masks.
I was going to say, you just got a, you have free advice.
No COVID.
That's great. Transportation again. And I have to tell you, this is a nuisance. It's, it's the pain when you're a parent trying to get your kid to, on the bus, and you're trying to get to work and everything. But I welcome that pain versus the pain we had last year at this time because this pain, we can work it out. You know, we know how to fix transportation. We know how to fix routes. And we know that they smooth out over time when drivers get used to it. And so I'm just really grateful that we're all back. You know, walking around the campus this afternoon at the high school and popping in on tennis and football practice and soccer game and volleyball, it is great to have our children back. And, you know, I just cannot be thankful enough. I do want to also just make mention to all parents and guardians, anytime you run into a difficulty, anytime you're experiencing trouble, definitely reach out to us. Reach out to your child's school, reach out to your child's principal or teachers, you know, reach out to any department. Everyone on our team is, is ready to be able to assist in any way that we can. I am seeing that happening a lot, which is really, really great. Moms and dads and guardians feel comfortable reaching out to us at the schools and central office. That's where we want to be. We want people to know that we're here to help and we're here to assist and make adjustments where we can. We know that parents and guardians and families have experienced a lot over the last 19 months. And we want to be a stress reducer, not a stress creator to the extent possible, for sure. Social, emotional learning and equity in our school district really is at the core of what we're trying to do for our kids. We know, and this board and this district has always known, that the academics is part of the total picture of healthy development. And this year, more than any probably, at least in recent history, is, is an important time to make sure we're devoting the necessary attention to our children's social and emotional wellbeing. And I've said this before, this isn't like fluffy, you know, stuff in the clouds. This is real, hands-on, making sure kids are okay. Because if children aren't okay, all of the other things that we hope for them are going to be left hanging in the balance. So a lot of work has been going into planning on welcoming our children back, supporting them, and ongoing effort as we continue to build and capitalize on our successes, but also attend to the areas that we know we need to improve upon. So I asked Deb to come this evening and give an update to the board and to the community on sort of that intersectionality. You know, we throw acronyms around so much in education Uh, you know, we throw acronyms around so much in education and, you know, changing titles and everything, but really, what are we talking about? We're talking about making sure that we're attending to the entire human being. Uh, we think about kids and we think little people, but, you know, they're developing humans. And just like us, we have to make sure that we're attending to those so that they can be, uh, healthy and well.
Each year, the district engages in a comprehensive strategic planning process. Our strategic plan aligns to the district's mission and vision, which focuses on the development of the whole child. So that our students become contributing members to a diverse and dynamic world. The goal of the strategic plan guides our work. And this evening, we will be sharing how the equity and social emotional learning work support the district's mission, vision and strategic plan. In other words, how are we creating an environment where all children and staff are seen and can learn? Pre-pandemic, the district began strengthening our practices surrounding equity and SEL, or social emotional learning. We brought the Collaborative for Academic and Social Emotional Learning, or CASL, to complete a review of our current SEL practices and partnered with New York University Metro Center to ensure that we were making decisions through the lens of equity. In addition, we began exploring the New York State Culturally Responsive Sustaining Education, or CRSSE, framework. During the pandemic, in addition to hybrid learning, our work continued at both the district and building level with the formation of an equity and SEL committees and viewing our work through these lenses. What has become clear is the connectedness of this work and how intertwined the core beliefs and goals are in these two areas. Both SEL and CRSSE have clearly delineated frameworks or goals. SEL work is grounded in five competencies, which help our students develop into adults who are compassionate, respectful, goal-oriented, and have the appropriate self-regulation, interpersonal and coping skills to become happy, contributing adults. The CRSSE framework focuses on education that supports and embraces a student's identity and reflects the individual greatness of each person. The goal of both, to quote the CRSSE, is to create a welcoming and affirming environment for everyone who comes into our buildings. In other words, create a school climate and culture that is responsive, inclusive and student-centered. Our strategic plan indicators focus on outcomes such as increased attendance, suspension rates and student failure rates. By focusing on building community and continuing to build an engaging, rigorous academic environment, we will work towards meeting our strategic plan indicators. So what are circle practices and where do they fit in? Circle practices are an indigenous practice which utilize, which is utilized to strengthen community. And in schools is utilized to build community in classrooms, buildings and across the district. The circle format is grounded in basic assumptions that allow staff and students or just adults to come together proactively using a formal protocol to create community. A safe place where people can check in on their feelings and if necessary, process challenging conversations. Once well-established, circle practices may be utilized to a greater extent to repair harm and provide an educational alternative to suspensions and detentions. It is one way in which schools can proactively work to build community and address discipline. The building of community, respecting others regardless of position, supporting the whole child and a positive approach to discipline are direct outcomes of both our SEL and equity work. The core assumptions of circle practices focus on strong relationships. The interconnectedness of our world, self-awareness and the unique nature of all people. The same assumptions again that are found in our SEL and equity work. Aligning and integrating this work together instead of working in silos will allow us to move forward to strengthen our positive school climate and culture. A district where students and staff experience joy, belonging, connectedness and inclusion. Moving forward, our work will be integrated, making our district decisions through all lenses. Buildings will be encouraged to combine their building-level SEL and equity committees into one. In addition, administrators have the opportunity during administrative retreat to explore circle practices and are coming together later this month to discuss how circles might enhance the district's work moving forward. Working in this way requires a very thoughtful and systemic approach. And as you can imagine, helping nine buildings move forward with restorative practices is no easy undertaking. This is something that's going to take time and in order to take hold in our community will take over three years to complete. We look forward to our work in these areas, supporting the goals of our strategic plan and continuing to make White Plains City School District a welcoming and inclusive place for all students and adults.
These are wonderful points that, that Ms. Argarten is making. But these are not just flowery things that we're saying. So over the pandemic, I was involved and a number of us on the board were involved and others in very, very deep conversations, Zoom meetings, redoing the, you know, the, the code of conduct and other things. This is stuff that we take incredibly seriously and it's really been spearheaded by Dr. Rika, Deb Argarten and others, um, to get this district so that we're really meeting the needs of each kid where they are and making more restorative practices. And as, as an attorney, I'm involved in that, I'm involved in, in, in work with, uh, with incarcerated people on a volunteer basis. So there's a deep understanding of this stuff. And so I just wanted to say that these aren't just flowery words. That there's real in-depth work going on across the district with all stakeholders so that we, we get this right and we do this.
Chuck, I couldn't have, I couldn't have asked, I think, for you to say that better. And I, and I think for me, you know, I have to tell you, I had to, I had to grow to this over the last 20 years. Being like many of us, we didn't experience this when we grew up. There was an expectation of compliance and if you were the type of person who complied, you didn't have any difficulty. Um, if you weren't, you went in a different direction. And, and that's not okay. And, you know, we, we truly want to ensure that every one of our children, regardless of whether it's misbehavior or mistaken behavior, um, uh, it is allowed to, to grow from that experience and not have to endure a specific path because of a mistake. So when we talk about suspension rates, we want to reduce our suspension rates dramatically. That does not mean we want to reduce our expectation for the way in which we behave. It doesn't mean that we're going to change or lower our expectation for positive interactions and, and, you know, what, what we all want for safe, supported school environments. It means that as the adults in the, in the environment, we have to recognize that this work is far more complex than do this because I said, right? Or if you step out of line, this happens to you and there's no recourse. Um, we know, as, as this board knows, that, that's not how life is. And it's important, if we, you know, if we really want to make sure that we are supporting every one of our 7,000 plus children, we do have to take a much more holistic view of all of their individual experiences and work with them there. And I have to tell you, sitting in a circle for me, you know, it makes my hands sweaty, I get all uncomfortable. Uh, but, but after learning and having all gone through this, you know, and, and learning how this can be utilized to achieve success, there are varying levels and not every, you know, not everybody, some people are like me, they're a little less comfortable in that. And that's okay, you can be a little less comfortable and still be part of the process and part of the community building. So, um, like Debbie said, this is gonna be ongoing. This is not a flash in the pan, you know, like your, what is it, like your implementation de jure.
Drive by.
You drive by, right? This has, this has to be part of the undergirding of, of what we've, you know, what this community has already created in terms of foundational experience. So on top of all those wonderful things you experience in White Plains, the other thing you get to experience in White Plains is, is a recognition that the adults who you work with understand that you're imperfect, um, you're gonna have bad days and you're a child. And, and it, and, and that again, doesn't mean that we're, we're, you know, you could still get suspended from school, right? Unfortunately, but as, as a student, you need to know that every adult i- is in your corner so that that doesn't happen. And so what can we do to make sure that that doesn't happen?
There's a reason.
Yeah.
It doesn't inform your future.
Right.
Uh, one mistake does not, um, inform your future. And, and I, I will also say that, you know, I, I did work with the, um, the new code of conduct, um, from the equity lens. Um, and students participated and, and that is hard work, right? You, I, I mean, when I say you, you know, I mean, you know, there are questions and there are hard questions that need to be asked and answered so that we prepared these students that come to us for a very short time now. You know, they're in and then they're out before you know it. And I think we know that because we can see them, that I just shook your hand two days ago and now you're off to Harvard, you know? We see that, so it, it's just very important that we give them that chance, um, to let them know that one mistake doesn't define you, that we want to know you as the whole person. We, we, we don't know everything that's going on that creates a bad day, so to speak. And, and it's important that we do that because they then become an example and an advocate and they can tell the story that brought them to where they, they get to.
It's hard to break that cycle because for us, again, most of us in this room probably experienced a very traditional educational experience. You sat in rows, listened to the teacher, wrote your vocabulary words down and your definitions, you know, spelling test on Fridays. Uh, we want to kind of make sure that we're continuing to grow, um, and learn from brain-based research and from, you know, psychological development that we didn't know about 20 years ago.
Well, we understand now, which we certainly didn't know even a few years ago, that children's brains are truly developing, that a 15-year-old, an 18-year-old and even a 20-year-old, their brains are not fully formed in many ways. We, we're changing our whole philosophy about that because they aren't set in stone at that point.
Right, like Doc, you know, when you ask your child, your 13-year-old, why did you do that? And then the child says, I don't know, they're telling the truth.
Right.
You know, they're absolutely telling the truth.
I was with a teacher on, I don't know what day it is, today, Friday, I guess. And she said to me, she was working with a very challenging student, and she said, these are my favorite students to work with. And I said, why? And she said, because I separate the behavior from the students. And each and every student deserves to know that we care about them regardless of what their behavior is and will help them learn how to manage and, and cope and control and interact. And that's part of our responsibility so that they can learn all the academics that they need to learn.
We also learn, right, as adults, so it is not just the students, um, who are learning. It's, it's the adults in the community, it is the staff, it is, right, the teachers, the staff, the faculty, the superintendent, the board. So it is.
Right, so Cheryl, to your point then, so I was on the special ed committee when we did the CASL audit and the review of that. And I think we, we, it was really eye-opening to look at what our schools were doing, what the teachers perceived the SEL work was, what the parents perceived the SEL work was. Um, so my question is, I know, you know, circle practices and SEL in theory and, and I, you know, we've read it and viewed it. What is it gonna look like for the teacher in the classroom? So like, I'm, I as a teacher myself, I get very nervous when I have to run a, a circle, uh, you know, and, and I haven't been asked to run one, but I know that nerves set in because kids want to share. And I'm certified in English and I'm certified in other areas, but not psychology, not guidance. So what I hope for part of this plan is including, um, professional development for our teachers to be comfortable to lead these discussions and, and to have these conversations because kids trust their teachers. They, they do tell us a lot of things and, and they, we need or they need to know what to do and how to react and, and how to be supports and be effective and, you know, say the right thing.
And I just wanted to add too, that part of that is also this culturally responsive lens through which we're looking, that there's not one way or one norm of behavior, right? And so we have to look at things much more broadly from many different perspectives.
So I guess what does a circle look like or expectations?
So circle practices are usually used to originally build community. So I want to take your question first, that teacher training. We would never ask people to do things that they're not comfortable with. So the professional development that we ultimately provide, and again, we're, we're seeking that, Dr. Hand and I are working with our administrators, will include coaching in the classroom. So teachers will not be expected to run circles without significant support. But the second part of that is that in a circle, you actually don't process whatever is said. You share and you move on, but it provides the teacher with an opportunity to then refer that child to somebody who might be more equipped to handle those challenging conversations. So we're not gonna be asking our staff who might not be social workers, psychologists, school counselors to unpack really challenging conversations. We're going to use them initially as a way to build community. Anything that needs to be referred to a different adult in the building will. And hopefully teachers will become more comfortable because hopefully administrators will start using circles in their practice at faculty meetings or things like that that will help also strengthen the school community among the adults.
Did you have a question?
Yes, she did, thank you.
And I'm happy to run a circle.
A fishbowl.
Hi, my name is Katie Kay, I live at 89 Grandview Avenue, I have two children in school. My cousin actually is a vice principal in Connecticut and for five years, she has been head of her service practices in the building. I'm a clinical social worker, so she and I have shared information. She uses information, we discuss plans and stuff, just give me ideas. My question is, how long, far along are we at, sorry, training the teachers? Because my understanding is the administration in your building really needs at least have one person who's really good at helping the staff then follow through on their service practices? And will we as parents know who those kind of people are in our building?
So the first part of your question is that we're at the very beginning stages. And when we started to review the code of conduct, we did that in view of research, right? And what the research says about discipline and how students learn from that experience and do students learn from that experience? And it became clear that we needed to widen our tool belt a little bit to include a larger umbrella of options for staff. So that's how we started in this. So the code was adopted by the Board of Education in June and allowed for language that allowed restorative practices but did not mandate restorative practices. The buildings have to take ownership and will be taking ownership of this work. And so it's really important that as we make decisions about what this rollout looks like, that our buildings are really the people who are speaking to us about their climate and culture and how they want to see this work unfold. We are really at the very beginning stage. We did some work over the summer with our administrators. We're going to start more work with our administrators, um, at the end of September. And then we've got, um, some resources ready to go depending on how the adminis, what way, in what way the administrators would like to move. We've got the resources ready to start training teachers thoroughly, training administrators thoroughly, before they ever start running circles within their classroom. So most organizations that do circle training take between five and seven days to train staff before they ever start to think about running circles within their building and then have a coaching piece within the classroom.
I guess my question is, will there be, um, a resource for the staff to come together? Because I know that that's something my cousin and I speak about.
Yes.
She runs the staff.
There will be resources for staff, whether it be somebody from the outside and then eventually train people inside.
And moms and dads too, and, and families too, I'm sorry to jump in, but yeah. And, and then also, um, looking to bring the families into part of that conversation as well. So that, you, you know, if, if one wanted to, like in a perfect scenario, you would replicate those processes at home, at school, at home, at school, you know what I mean? So the child begin, I, you know, you guys talk about it, right? So, so that the child finds and understands that, you know, this network of people is all working in the same direction.
Well, Deb, can you give us some sort of a long-term timeline? Um, because Stephen and I were just talking about the challenges of trying to do this with 20 students in a classroom when you can't, you don't have the physical space right now. So how far out are we looking? I mean.
To train one cohort of teachers takes about three years in total to get through the, the whole process and for them to really be, uh, for the, you don't want to ever start an initiative that you're not gonna follow through on. So it takes about three years to start to finish. I'm sorry, to train really a building, to own the practice within, within that building.
That's the board gets to the children?
No, 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 that's including the children.
So at what point, once we're working with administrators now and getting ready to roll it out to the staff, at what point do we start working with the kids? And how do we make that happen within the confines of both?
So I was circle trained on Zoom. I'll say that's not how we're circle training students. But I was circle trained on Zoom. Again, you know, sitting students around a small, around a classroom, taking a, a smaller group of students, a subset of those students. We still have morning meeting now in our classrooms. Um, but once teachers go through the five days, they'll start to work with, with coaches in their classrooms.
And a lot of it has to do with really the classroom community. So it's gonna be, it could potentially be different in every classroom and how they approach, you know, uh, their circles or how they approach, uh, their, their advisory communication, all of those types of things. So I think it'll be, uh, it kind of remains to be seen, but definitely physically distanced, uh, you know, is something that has to be part of everything we do unfortunately right now.
Correct. So you keep talking about this circle practice. Is it specific to one child, so this child has an issue and they want to discuss it in the group and then refer them out? Or it's just to build community for them all these morning time or this morning meeting?
Good question.
Section, they would sit together, that cohort might just, you know, kind of bad day and this is why. And then the two, and then refer them out, is, is that more?
So typically circles are used to build community first.
Okay.
And then they can be used, let's say something happens on the And then they can be used, let's say something happens on the playground. The teacher could elect to use a circle to process what happened on the playground. Could elect. Certainly, as our district gets deeper into this work, you could use a circle or some sort of restorative, small circle to process a discipline issue. And as Dr. Ricker, you know, said, we're still going to have suspensions, right? There's still certain things that are going to happen within our school community where we must suspend a child. But certainly building a proactive toolkit for people and community will start to allow people to process those disciplinary minor infractions.
So it seems clear to me how this would kind of play out at an elementary school level. But in a middle school and high school level, can you talk about how that would, how the circles would play out? Because they have so many different, they interact with so many different people.
So there's usually a dedicated period in which this work takes place. And it's usually about once a week where teachers, when you're going through the training, about once a week, the teachers arrange a guiding circle with somebody else. And part of our challenge is finding that time in the student's schedule, right? So those are some of the logistics that we're working through with the administrators. At the secondary level, it's actually a little easier to run a circle, right? Students function out a little bit, have more language for what they want to talk about and experience a little more about how to express themselves. But finding the time is always the challenge. And it's really a very big commitment on the part of the district to make this happen. And adults, and adults, so.
More to come for sure.
Don't expect so many questions.
What of our students?
Go ahead.
This is similar to the, I don't know if they're familiar with the circle of power respect.
Yeah.
That's exactly the same.
Circle of power respect.
I can go over it.
So it's a little different in the respect that you're going to set some other guidelines as a group. You're going to have some opening and closing ceremonies. There's a little bit of a ceremonial aspect to the circle because it does include our indigenous practices. And I'm not sure the circle of respect is actually used for restoring a relationship between two people. And so taking it a step further and using it. Anything else? I'm happy to speak with you. You can call my office at 2029 and I'm happy to be with you.
There'll definitely be more to come. Thank you, Deb.
This is the perfect meeting.
Sounds good.
Yeah, this is the perfect meeting.
Yep. Thank you for being here.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Next, we'll move on to our summary action items. We have summary action items four, four through eight. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you very much. I'd like to draw your attention to the very generous donations that the board is preparing to accept and thank, of course, our contributors. We have fabric and sewing equipment from Joanne Freidos at the high school, I'm sorry, for the high school. $1,000 from Dr. David Elcott and Rabbi Shira Milgram for the Acts of Loving Kindness Award. $1,000 from the, Michelle? Baxia? Chinese School of Greater New York. You always help me with that pronunciation. For the Asian Heritage Scholarship. $75 for Michael Stevens for the Brown Family Memorial Scholarship and two guitar amplifiers from John Curley for the high school as well. So thank you very much to those donors.
Are there any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we have one individual action item for the strategic plan. We have the recommended approval of the strategic plan for 2021 through 2024. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have questions?
Just a statement. First of all, I want to thank the trustees for participating in the strategic planning process. And you'll notice that it does give us multiple years. But as everyone remembers, we actually reengage with the plan every year. There is an appendices that were, there are appendices that will be coming. They don't change in any way, the focus of the plan. But when we put it up online, it'll be there for anyone who is interested. I do also want to congratulate the school district for taking on what are two new and challenging indicators. One is, of course, which we talked about this evening, is reducing the overall out-of-school suspension rate. But also beginning to delve into the number of students who fell for courses. And that's the beginning point. What we want to do is we really want to find and identify root cause for students who are struggling academically, particularly in a large way, and begin to isolate and support. So thank you for that and thanks for supporting the plan.
Any other questions, concerns? All in favor?
Aye.
Next, we'll move on to the board discussions and our committee reports. I know we had finance, our first finance committee meeting. Do we have, do we want to say anything? We had our charter and.
Hope of office. We had our community members do it. We went over what our plans are for the rest of this academic year.